Hi there, I'd like to call to order the November 12th, 2025 regular meeting of the Gorum School Department. Will everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to 1.2, roll call, April.
Nicole Jo Fisher.
Here.
Michelle Littlefield.
Here.
Mia De Sanctis.
Here.
Jeffrey Ballard.
Here.
Holly Tatishi.
Here.
LaWanza Tompkins.
Here.
Eric Thistle.
Here.
Moving on to 1.3, approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of October 8th and the workshop meeting of October 2nd, 2025. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve of the regular meeting minutes of October 8th and the workshop meeting minutes of October 22nd as presented.
Thank you.
Motion by Michelle, second by Eric. Any questions, discussion? All those in favor? Five, zero.
You can oppose or abstain.
Yes. You can, um, sorry, how many people's hands were up for the approve?
There you go.
Okay, so four approve, any nays, opposed? No opposed? Any abstaining? Paula, are you abstaining?
Which date was that?
For the meeting minutes.
It was both of them.
Yes, both dates, yeah. Okay, three abstaining. Great. All right, moving on to 1.4, annual organization, I'm going to hand this over to Superintendent Perry.
Thank you. So at this time, what I'm going to do is I'm going to sort of facilitate the nomination of the chair. Once that position has been nominated and approved by the school committee, then I will turn it back over to the person that is nominated and approved by the school committee to run the rest of the meeting. So at this point in time, I'd like to open it up for nominations. Is there a nomination from the floor?
I'd like to nominate Nicole Jo Fisher.
Thank you, is there a second for that nomination?
Second.
All right, are there any other nominations? Seeing none, all closed nominations. All those in favor of Nicole to serve as chair? Any opposed? No abstentions, that is seven oh, six oh, or did you abstain?
Oh, I abstained, yeah.
You can abstain.
Yeah.
So six to, six to one abstention. Nicole, you're the chair.
Yes.
There you go.
Thank you so much.
All right, moving on to the election of, and there's one abstention. All right. Moving on to 2.0 administrative reports, we're going to take something a little bit out of order tonight since we have some student presentations here. So 2.2 program review of Village School, B-A-R-R-U times, and I'm going to hand it over to Superintendent Perry.
That actually is referred to as BAR, BAR U times, yes, thank you. Mrs. Fodder, I believe you've got some students you'd like to introduce and talk a little bit about the BAR program that is being implemented at Village Elementary School. So I'll turn it over to Cheryl Fodder, the principal at Village.
Good evening, thank you for having us. We are Village Elementary School. We're excited to be here. We have six students from all three of our fifth grade classrooms, Mrs. Meggerson, Mrs. Penley, and Mrs. Pagliaro. Our students have been working on some BAR lessons, which stands for Building Assets, Reducing Risk. And this particular project also included one of our circle up books. So it's all comprehensive here. We have Malcolm, if you want to just wait. We have Wyatt. We have Gus. Sophie.
Shaw.
And Yamaska. Temple Grandin is a scientist and inventor who helped change Yamaska. Temple Grandin is a scientist and inventor who helped change the world.
Temple Grandin showed everyone that thinking differently is a superpower, and she made the world a kinder place for both people and.
Find happiness, express your feelings in a positive way, celebrate a compliment, show people, show people who you are, and many more. Do you, do you guys have any suggestions on how you are going to change the world?
What do you think, students too?
Well, that's smart, yeah. I think by being kind and thinking of others, whether that's holding a door open for somebody, whether that's giving a little small compliment, or even sometimes just having a smile on your face and saying hello can maybe change the world a little bit.
Can I add one?
Yeah.
All right, my way to change the world is I'm going to work really, really hard to make sure that these schools are the best schools they can be for all of you as students so that you can change the world.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Well, your shift.
Try to always be honest.
There you go.
That is very good.
After all our discussions, the fifth grade created their own video clip like Kid President. In the video, we finish the sentence by "I am, and I am going to change the world," but we are excited to share our ideas with you, please enjoy our video.
Oh, hold on.
Is the volume not hooked up?
I am hooked up. It's running, we just can't hear it.
All right, hang on, hang on.
I don't know how to.
Hi, I'm Elijah.
Okay.
Oh, it is coming out of the speaker.
It's coming out of the speaker.
Yeah, it's up all the way, I might just need to turn it up upstairs. Right, I'll try to do that.
Okay, thank you. This was my biggest fear.
Wait for him to get upstairs and turn his volume up. This is your biggest fear, it's going wonderful. Like, nobody's on fire.
Yeah, no, technology is my biggest fear.
This too shall pass.
It just won't work like we want it to.
All right, he's cranking it up.
Oh, okay.
Okay, give it a shot now.
Might be loud, I hear.
If you turn it down on your side if it's, if it's too loud. Oh, no.
Well, they had really great ways to change the world.
Yeah, I guess it's not going to go. It's all right.
Okay, so we're not going to be able to play the video. Mrs. Fodder, though, please know that the school committee members each have a link in their agendas, and I dropped the copy of the video into the public folder as well so members of the public can watch the video too if they go to our website, okay?
Excellent, they have a little closing, ready?
Oh, they have a closing.
We are powerful, we are kind, we are world changers, thank you for listening.
Very nice, thank you.
Any questions or comments from the school committee?
I'll just make a comment. Just a comment, I just wanted to say you all did a great job, public speaking is not easy, sometimes things don't go our way, but the way we react to that can be part of how we can change the world, right? And I think you guys did a phenomenal job, you should be so proud of yourselves.
Since we didn't get an opportunity to hear the video, do you each have a way that you want to change the world, like really quickly, we'll go down the line? Do you want to start, Malcolm? No, you want to pass, that's okay. Respect and be kind, I love that. Picking up trash, those are great, yeah. Sure.
Helping others.
Helping others and being kind, great, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, great, we clap for students here, so thank you so much for presenting and dealing with our technical difficulties. Again, the video will be linked in the agenda that's on the website, so you are more than welcome to stay, but you do not have to, but thank you again. We are moving on, I'm going to add something to the agenda tonight, which is the recognition of our state champion volleyball team, so I'm going to hand it over to Superintendent Perry.
Who is very quickly going to hand it over to our athletic director, Tim Spear, as our younger families exit, but don't support volleyball, just FYI, they very much do, I saw many of them in the crowd. All right, so Mr. Spear, would you like to introduce this?
Thank you for having us here today, I think a great segue, if they were still here, I would say congratulations, and the things that they're talking about don't change as you get to high school, and some of our student athletes here practicing some of the same things that those young ladies and young kids were talking about. But I have the privilege tonight, thank you for having us, to recognize our volleyball team who won their third straight Class A state championship last weekend, and I'm going to quickly turn it over so that these guys can talk about it too. We have two of our captains here, Lauren and Addison, and Coach Emma can also, would also please come up and say a few words, and then we have a couple, we have something to present as well.
All right, hi everybody, I hope everyone's having a great night. Thank you for having us here, we're super excited. We just want to give a huge thank you to everybody, we really would not have been able to do it without our Gorum community and everybody that's helped us get there, so thank you.
On behalf of the team, we would love to present this state championship poster to Superintendent Perry, signed by the whole team.
Love that.
Hi, everybody, it is such a privilege and a gift to be standing here for the third year in a row. This season has been remarkable, in all three seasons when we start, I mean, we don't know what's going to happen, right? And we're startled by losses, and we have hard moments, and to be able to pull together a third win in a row has been so unbelievably surreal. We have a big program with a lot of parents and a lot of players and a handful of coaches that work incredibly hard. We have incredible support from our athletic director, Tim Spear, and the community supports us in so many ways coming to our games, parents making sure kids are to practice on time and fed and given the kick that they need to be playing their hardest, and we really came together this year, we battled through some difficult games, and it has been a dream this past week getting to celebrate our championship and bring home our third gold ball to Gorum. And it's also special that we've had the state championship in our town for a few years now, so I'm so proud to be part of this community, thank you so much for having us and our awesome team and the players that we're able, and parents that were able to attend tonight. Again, it's a privilege and a gift, thank you so much, and it would just be so fun to be welcomed back next year as well. Anyway, thank you so much.
Great, thank you, any questions or comments? I will say, so, don't get upset at me, but my first game was the championship game. Volleyball is very new to me, and I had to ask a lot of questions of a seventh grader who has played volleyball before, and it is so, like, it was like honestly breathtaking, and it is such an amazing environment, and just how you all support each other. Again, I've never played volleyball a day in my life, and I wanted to get out there with you guys, like, it was just incredible, and just, again, what great leadership from your captains, even when you guys felt like maybe you were down, you just lifted yourself back up, and there was so much encouragement, and it's absolutely incredible. And as somebody who grew up in Maine, and to have one gold ball is pretty amazing, but to have three is just absolutely incredible, so congratulations to you all for all your hard work, you make us very proud here in the town of Gorum, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, great, and we get to clap for students! Yay! As before, you are welcome to stay, but you do not have to, we just appreciate that you are here and that you brought your hardware, and thank you so much, enjoy the rest of your night. Moving on to administrative reports, any questions about the administrative reports this month? Again, thank you to all of our district leadership team that takes the time to update us, it's a lot of work to do those, and it's lots of great and wonderful information, so thank you again for your hard work. Moving on to 2.3 program review presentation on the new bus routing software, Nicole, Superintendent Perry.
Certainly, coming up is our new technology, I mean, transportation, see, it's a, it's a, transportation director, it's a virus, I'm sorry, Mitzi. Mitzi Smith, who's been doing a wonderful job here in Gorum in the transportation department. She's going to talk in just a moment about our new routing software, which is BusRight, that we've just switched to this year, and some of the things that we've been doing with that software, some of the things that are working really well, some of the challenges we still have and bugs to work out, and where we're kind of heading next steps with this, the transportation software, so I'm giving her a minute, trying to talk a little bit as she.
You're taking my whole spiel, but that's okay.
Oh, sorry, well, see, the longer you do that, the more I'm going to talk, yeah.
They said it was going to be easy, but it's not.
It, oh.
Did it go in?
It did for a second. Something happened.
Okay.
I like that the state championship thing is behind me, this is awesome. Nice, nice video, videography there, Ben, that's wonderful. Are you all good? Yep, there you go, Mitzi, yep.
Does anyone know how to put that up on the main screen?
Yep.
That would be great, if you could. Just, just to get over my slides. Where's your slideshow right now? So just right there. However you.
There you go.
Perfect.
Well, thank you for that introduction. Couple tough acts, couple tough acts to follow there. Again, my name is Mitzi Smith, I'm the new transportation director, it's been a pleasure to be asked here tonight to speak to you a little bit about the new bus routing software. Let's see here. Just a little history and background for those of you who may not know, the district of, the Gorum district had utilized the state-funded software program for many years through TransFinder. Again, that was a subsidized, free platform to the districts in the state of Maine, so unfortunately, effective June 30th of this year, that was no longer an option for school districts in the state, so we had to choose another option. BusRight was the option that we chose, and we started a new contract with them on July 1st. So the differences are quite startling between the two, the two programs. BusRight gives us the ability to build and manage routes digitally, to communicate and change quickly with drivers, track buses in real time, streamline the reports and compliance documentation, and soon we'll also have the parent app, which we've been working pretty diligently on with BusRight to roll out to families. What we're seeing approximately, we have approximately 120 active routes now managed in BusRight, high school, middle school, elementary, special needs, outside placement, McKinney-Vento, all of those routes are now housed in BusRight, which we're very pleased it was time-consuming, but they're all currently there and able to be accessed through that system. We've seen incredible driver engagement, it's been excellent, as with new technology, sometimes people are slow to adapt to the changes, but they've done, the drivers have been excellent about really working with us in partnership to get the software where we need to get it. All drivers have all met with somebody now to go over their routes to make sure that they're mirroring what we're seeing in BusRight, so that when they're out doing their routes, if somebody should hop, have to hop on their bus at the last minute, they're able to do so pretty seamlessly, so we had an example of that, which Heather just brought up tonight in a meeting, where we had to evacuate Narragansett School last week because of an unexpected gas leak, and because of BusRight, we were able to put those kids on buses where it wasn't necessarily their assigned driver, but that driver was able to get those students home pretty seamlessly and know where those stops were without knowing what direction that they were heading when they, when they started out, so that was incredible to see that work in real time. So the ability to refine those schedules and stops, it's improved timing incredibly, and which indeed, which in turn improves the safety of all the students as they're on the buses. Just to give you a look at what our live map looks like, looks like a lot of school buses all in one spot, and when they're, when they're at the schools, it looks really funny because it looks like they're all on top of each other, but what this gives me the ability to do at any given time is to bring up a driver in real time, he gives their bus number, it will tell me what stop they're on, it will tell me if they're running on time, if it's in green, it tells me they're running on time, if it's in red, it tells me that they're running late, so that's something that I can anticipate or try to troubleshoot before the parents start to call and let us know that we have a bus running late. So it's very user-friendly, it's an intuitive system, so we've been able to pick it up pretty quickly, so. But like anything, we had some challenges because it's software, as we've all seen here tonight, so our biggest issues that we faced are with BusRight are, they previously didn't own their mapping system, so what we did is when we built all these routes, we spent a lot of time going through and fine-tuning left side of the road pickup, right side of the road pickup, those type of things, and we would move a map pin to those specific locations, and unfortunately, every time BusRight would make a change on their map, it would change all of our routes, so it was kind of like we were going in circles for a few weeks there, but that's, they've been great with working with us, they now own their maps, so hopefully going forward, we won't have those, those problems, so again, the drivers, we're a little frustrated by that, but they've, we've corrected those issues. And again, the customer service of BusRight has been incredible, I can't say enough about how responsive they are, their technology team is, is great. We've also addressed some capacity and route adjustment issues, we're able to quickly find and correct capacity and balances and inadequacies to get real time, real ridership times, which is going to be important moving forward to see how many buses we need at any given time, so that's been, that's been incredible. Just to give you a look at what I see when I'm looking at three different locations and little map dots, this gives me the ability to put multiple bus routes up on the screen at, at any given time, and I can quickly adjust stop locations, or if, at any given moment, I need to put a stop on a different bus, it's, it's pretty seamless to do so. So again, it's a very user-friendly system. Things that we're looking forward to, they have, BusRight has let us have the ability to implement pre-trip and post-trip inspection reports right on the tablets for the drivers, so going forward, that's going to save an incredible amount of paper, it's going to save a lot of time on the driver's part to get those turned into us each day, and at state reporting time, it's going to be great to be able to pull all those reports pretty seamlessly from that system. We've also worked on field trips, and that's going to be fantastic because the drivers are going to have the GPS directions and things available right to them on their tablets at any given time so that they're not intimidated by taking trips that they may have not previously signed up for, so that's going to help us tremendously as well. The parent app, we've intentionally delayed the rollout of the app because we've been working really closely with BusRight to make sure that once we release that information to parents, that all the information is accurate and transparent to them so that there's no confusion or questions as to where their students are at any given time. One of the hiccups for that has been the transfer students, we were trying to figure out how to best track students that get on and off multiple buses, so that parents don't just see a list of five or six buses listed, they can accurately see where their, where their student is at any given time, so again, this is just a quick look at what that, those, those fields look like, it's very, very in-depth, it will give us a whole report on schools and locations, times, departures, mileage, all those things which will in turn, again, use for state reporting purposes at the end of the year, so it's a fabulous system, and the more we get to dig deeper into it, the more time we spend with it, where we'll unlock some more features. This is what the parent app is going to look like when parents do finally get that, and they're going to have the ability to set up real-time notices as to how far the bus is, five, 10, 15 minutes, depending on how late they like to run in the morning, that's, so these things are coming, we're hoping within the next month to have some real solid information on the parent app and get those bugs worked out so we can release that to families. And I had a short video, but it's not going to beat the kids' video, so I don't know if we'll have volume, but I can try on mine just to see. Oh, mine works.
You know, I've been doing this for, you know, 15 years, and always memorize my route, but this makes it so much easier.
It's just so much easier having the GPS in there because they just press a button and it just tells me where to go.
Coming to a new town, not knowing the town, it will help you do the route without doing a dry run, and I think every bus should have it, it will help the drivers a lot.
I love the fact that it tells you what your starts are and how far away you are to your next start.
It's great to hear the route because you get a lot of distractions on the bus with the kids, just a little bit more safe because you don't have to look down, you can hear it, you can focus on the route.
I wish the volume had worked for the kids, more, more so than this. So in summary, in closing, I just wanted to say that BusRight has been incredible, we're really pleased with the software as a whole, there's, they've been responsive, I think going forward, it's going to be a great partnership, and it's going to increase ridership safety, and that's what we all want. Does anybody have any questions about BusRight? I look forward to coming back and speaking to you with another update when we have everything implemented and running smoothly.
Because I worked closely, when I worked at Village School, with transportation, and that is just so exciting because it was so painfully manual.
Yes.
Before.
It's very, it's, and it's very user-friendly too, so it's, it's, I appreciate that part of it. It's not scary technology.
That's good, intuitive's nice.
Yes.
I have two questions. First is, one, I want you to make maybe a shout-out if you have any open driving positions that you might want to talk about.
I currently do not.
Okay, good, and do you?
We are currently in a, I don't even like to say it out loud, but we've currently filled all of our vacant positions.
Wow, do you think that this is helping with that?
I think it helps, we have a lot of teachers that have their CDL, we have a lot of coaches, and I think this is going to help with them being more interested in maybe hopping in and helping us when we need them at the last minute because it takes a little of that stress out, knowing where they're going.
Great, awesome.
Thank you, Mitzi. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Moving on to 2.4 program review, school nutrition program presentation, Superintendent Perry.
Yes, thank you, so I'll try my best to talk long enough for Raina to get that hooked up as well. So tonight, one of the topics that the school committee had expressed interest in learning more about was our school nutrition program, and what exactly is this reimbursable meal thing, like, what does that mean to have a reimbursable meal? What do you have to have for components, what do you need, what does that mean in terms of finances and that sort of thing, so. Raina's like, oh, going to trouble, she's getting it, oh, good. So anyway, Raina's going to talk a little bit about the school nutrition program in terms of what is that reimbursable meal and trying to help educate not only school committee members, and so this would be a great opportunity for you to ask questions, but also members of the public that might be watching here tonight. Raina, did I talk long enough?
You did, thank you.
Oh, very good, I'm going to turn it over then to Raina Lee Cooper, who is our school nutrition program director.
Hi guys, hi everybody, thank you for having me, I wrote everything down because, I just did. So tonight, I am going to attempt to simplify the Gorum School Nutrition Program, the USDA's National School Lunch Program, free meals, and how they all tie together. I will also address a couple of other questions that have arisen this year. The first thing I need to do is clear up the misconception that meals are free. Meals are not free, students no longer pay for the meals, but they are not free. Well, if students aren't paying, who is? Okay, so because we participate in the National School Lunch Program, we are able to serve one reimbursable breakfast and one reimbursable lunch to each student every day at no charge. This began in 2021, when the state began covering the portion of the meal costs not covered by federal funding. These are the reimbursement rates for this current school year. What is covered by the state versus what is covered by federal funding is determined by the eligibility of the students. How eligibility is determined is by the free and reduced apps and by the direct certification list. So this year, that's small, we have 406 free students, 80 reduced, and 2,250 paid. So if you look at the paid eligibility, for each lunch, the federal funding gives us 53 cents, and the state covers the other $4.16. For a free lunch, federal funding, the whole thing, 4.69. So there is still currently a great deal of confusion surrounding the school nutrition program and what constitutes a reimbursable meal. So in working on this presentation, I really started thinking about what got us here, why? Why is there such confusion? And I had to go back a couple of years, all the way back to 2020. And I had to go back a couple of years, all the way back to 2020. Guys, remember that?
Oh, gosh, that's horrible.
Yeah. So in April, May, and June of 2020, we ran the Operation Feed Gorm, where we advertised that we had free meals for all children, not just students, all children 18 and under. Free. We had free bread available to all community members. Free. I mean, the middle school gym was packed floor to ceiling with bread, free, rolls, free, pastries, free. I mean, free everywhere, right? And then in 2021, we had our cohorts, and we were delivering meals home, and we advertised those as free. We were also, we were including water in those meals. I'm not sure if we had a waiver for that, or if that was just part of what was happening with COVID. During the same school year, we had milk available for purchase for students, which definitely caused confusion. Why are we paying for milk if lunch is free? So that happened. Then in March 2021, we saw the return of à la carte items available for purchase at the middle school and the high school. More confusion. In 2122, meals continued to be advertised as free, but with the caveat that a fruit or veggie must be taken to qualify as a reimbursable meal. Then in March of 2025, we started advertising that reimbursable meals are served at no charge rather than free. This was instructed by the Maine DOE, so where are we now? One lunch and one breakfast are available to every student every day at no charge. Meals must meet the USDA National School Lunch Program and School Breakfast Program meal requirements. À la carte items are still available. The elementary schools have started offering home meal completer kits, which kind of makes that milk free, and I'll show you that later. Water is not included in reimbursable meals anymore, and I'll explain that. And no-charge meals are available to students only. So, okay, so let's get down to it. What are the reimbursable lunch requirements? Students must take three of the five components to qualify as a reimbursable meal. The five components being fruit, vegetable, grain, meat-me-alternate, and milk. One of the components must be a half-cup serving of fruit or vegetable. Seems pretty simple, right? Okay, well, like I said, we participate in the National School Lunch Program, and we operate with offer versus serve. Each one of these components has its own set of requirements about what needs to be offered, which is different requirements at each grade level, but I'm not going to bog you down with that stuff tonight because that's too much. So just briefly, fruit. These are the requirements, each grade level, what we have to serve daily and weekly. Vegetables, same idea, different grade levels. We have to make sure we hit each of the subgroups every week. Grains, 80% of our grains during the week must be whole grain. If you look, the daily and the weekly do not match, so we have to make sure on a daily basis we're serving enough to meet our weekly requirements. Same with meat-me-alternates, with the daily, weekly not matching. Milk's easy. Okay. So most of our entrees are two components, which is great. So pizza, you have the grain, and you have the meat-me-alternate, the cheese. So it's great. You grab a slice of pizza, you grab an apple. All three of my kids did it every single day of high school. That was it. Bing bang boom, you're done. Same with peanut butter and jelly. It's meat-me-alternate and the grain. This is an example of a totally, completely full reimbursable meal. You have the grain, you have the meat-me-alternate, and if that's a half cup of tomato sauce, that's a vegetable. And we have special spoodles to make sure it is four ounces. You have to use a certain spoon. So we also have additional requirements. This year, of all of those components I just talked about, 90%, of them have to be purchased domestically. That's going to get tighter as the years go on. We have certain calories and sodium requirements that we have to meet the minimum and maximum of. I've gotten comments from parents this year about, well, my kid plays sports, or why can't they have more, or this portion's not big enough. Well, we have calories that we have to not go over. So it's tough because everyone's still thinking it's free. Like, I walk into the cafeteria and it's free, but it's, there are so many rules. So, oh, and then the added sugar, we did, so the cereal, yogurt, and flavored milk has limits on how much added sugar can be in each of them, and that's going to also get tighter the next couple of years. Okay. My mouth is so dry. Hold on. Okay. So at the K to five level, students choose a pre-trade entree from the window. Most of the entrees are two components. Taking a milk is optional. They do not have to take a milk. We have a lot of teachers still, or lunch duty monitors saying you have to take a milk. They don't. They only have to have to take a half-cup serving of fruit or vegetable. When they get to the salad bar, they have to take one, but they can take as many different items as they want from that salad bar. The only thing is sometimes, and I know this from when I was manager of Nariannset, there are sometimes like supplier budgetary reasons that would limit a certain item to one. Watermelon's a huge one. If you don't tell the kids they can just have one, they're gone the first lunch. I mean, no one else is getting them. So, but they can take more than one. So here's a couple of examples. Pizza, like I said, two components. Cheeseburger sub, two components. Chicken nuggets, two components. And they all have enough vegetables. So, good job, guys. Okay, so now, middle school and high school. They can take any entree. It's not just the hot meal option, it's any entree. They can take the pizza, the cold sandwiches, the hot sandwiches, the items on the slide, any entree, and that will be a reimbursable meal as long as they have the half-cup fruit or vegetable. There was, there's even to this day still confusion about that, people thinking it's just the hot bar, but it's any item that's available in the high school and middle school and elementary school. Again, milk is optional. They can purchase a second entree if they want. It's only one reimbursable lunch, one reimbursable breakfast per day. And à la carte items are also available for purchase. These are the à la carte items. Okay, so here's a picture taken a couple of years ago with items on their tray that are not included in a reimbursable meal. So when they go through the point of service, the cashier has to be able to identify that that Snapple, that ice cream, that cookie on this picture, that switch, those are not included in a reimbursable meal. Those are all à la carte items that they need to have money in their account to be able to purchase. So no child will ever, ever be denied a meal. It's always been that way. But before all meals were no charge, we allowed kids to go negative with their accounts because of that. But we don't have that issue anymore. Is chips, or ice cream, or a Snapple. So we have, last year, we eliminated to be, like, the ability to charge. This is what I was talking about earlier. So I actually got this idea from the director in Westbrook. If a child has a home meal and wants a milk, and we don't want to charge them for it, they can take two of these other components, one of which has to be either the fruit or the vegetable, and then either the grain, the goldfish, or the meat-me-alternate, the cheese stick. And those three things together is a reimbursable meal, and they don't have to buy that milk, which is awesome. That was like the best news I got last year. Like, that's amazing, and we're totally doing that. So our elementary schools are doing that. So water, this was also a lot of confusion about why do I have to pay for water? Because there was that time when they didn't. But we, so because we, a part of the National School Lunch Program, it is a requirement that we have to equip the cafeterias with their water jugs or water fountains, which we do. This was taken a couple of days ago at the middle school. But providing bottled water to students is not a reasonable or necessary cost to the program, and therefore, the program must charge for bottled water. Adult meals are not free. School food service account funds are intended to purchase food for reimbursable meals, which are for students only. The price for an adult meal must cover the cost of preparing the meal, including the value of USDA foods. The reason adult meals are priced higher than student meals is because reimbursement is only received for student meals. The school board approved the current adult meal prices, and they have not increased since their implementation in 2324. $2.50 for breakfast, $6.00 for lunch. Any questions? I talked fast.
You did great. Any questions?
And maybe a little bit more for the superintendent, but also you, Raina, may be able to answer. And I'm just curious about any impacts to what's been going on federally in terms of federal funding, if we are feeling better about that situation, if there's still a potential threat that like our, you know, no-charge programs could be at risk in the future? Just kind of generally curious of thoughts on that topic.
Well, I will tell you, directors are definitely, everyone's nervous about it, but every time we get together, I was just in Orano a couple of weeks ago, and Jane McLucas, the nutrition director of the state of Maine, it's just don't worry about it until there's something where, like, just don't worry about it. Keep doing what you're doing is the message we keep getting. So we're not worrying about it. But, you know, it's in the back of my mind.
Thank you. Makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
I will, I just want to shout out and give a kudos to all the nutrition staff. I have volunteered in both the middle school and the Nariannset kitchen, and to feed all of those children in such a short period of time and to do it so smoothly is amazing. Like, I don't think a lot of people really understand that not only the process that you have to go through to coordinate all of this, to cook all of these meals, but then the mere operation of it occurring is amazing. And those kids get fed, and fed is best, and that's just how I feel. But thank you to all of them because they do work so hard.
No, thank you so much for saying that because they do. I mean, underappreciate a lot of the time, right? Like, you don't notice what they're doing, but holy cow, do they kill it. And our food is awesome. So if you guys are buying the food, come get lunch, and you have to buy it. It's not free. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Raina.
Thank you.
To 3.0 communications, 3.1 public comment. Would any member of the public like to make public comment? Seeing none. Moving on to 3.2, student school committee members. Lola, do you want to introduce our new student school committee member?
This is Danya. She's starting this year, and she's a junior.
Yep, that's right. I go to Gorm High School. I'm a junior, and I'm happy to be here.
Great. Go ahead if you want to give us your report.
So Gorm had a great homecoming game against Bedfordford, which was followed the following day with our homecoming dance, which was put on by the student council for the theme of Starry Night. And we would like to send our congratulations to the girls' volleyball team on their win. And then we also had our sports awards night last Wednesday, and there were many great athletes that were recognized.
Last weekend, we had a theater program putting on the play Our Town, which was played Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. The Gorm music department put on a mattress sale last Sunday as well, which I'm pretty sure I can tell is successful. And multiple clubs put on donation events, and these are clubs like Key Club, Interact, and the Student Council.
Great. Any questions? Oh, awesome. Great job. Welcome. How much, pronounce your name again for me.
It's Danya.
Danya, Danya. Okay, I'm going to get it. Thank you so much. All right, moving on to 3.3, Superintendent Perry.
Yes, thank you. So I did want to mention too, I think, did the students do, I think the National Launch Society did like a blood drive? Did they do that within the past couple of weeks too? Yeah, that's another great one. I think trying to keep track of all the students and their efforts and work to provide services to our community is just, it's incredible to listen to, so I just wanted to add that one. Thank you. So moving on to the less exciting stuff, I did want to share or continue to share, each month, I'm trying to share a portion of our State of the Schools report with the public, just because it's a large document. It is, if you want to see the entire document, it's on our website, about 91 pages, got lots of great information in it. But for those of you that don't have that kind of time to sit and read, I've been trying to break up a couple of pieces each time that I do one of my, one of my reports. So this month, what my focus is on is on NWA scores, and not just any NWA scores, but our growth scores. So this is just particularly looking at how we measure growth each year with NWA. And again, this is looking at last year's data, so this is not this current year, but it's previous year. And what I showed here, and what you could see, it's in the public documents as well, but I'm looking at a picture of a language arts scores. And what NWA does for us each year is they project growth each year, and they'll give you a little diamond picture on a chart. And that diamond is the target score that the grade levels need to meet in order to meet their growth, their growth trajectories. And what we see here is the, is the target scores for the last year. And what I hope you can see is that if, if the blue line hits that diamond, then the class hit their overall growth targets. If there's a gap between the diamond and the blue bars, then they did not meet the targets. As you can see, growth targets, if you look at the chart, but I'll describe it to you right now, growth targets were met in grades three, four, six, and nine. Growth targets were very close to being met in grades five, seven, and 10 in English Language Arts. There were gaps that were larger in grades one, two, and eight. This is far better than the previous year's growth scores, which showed most of our students did not meet their growth targets at that point in time. But, so this is a far improvement in this past year that we've seen in the NWA scores for Language Arts. I anticipate that we're going to continue to see that trajectory in the coming year as well, but haven't got those scores yet, so we'll be, we'll keep an eye on that. I also am describing the ones in math, so I just described English Language Arts. And again, when you look at math across grades one through 10, which are the grades that are scored in NWA, you can see that in the math one, again, there's those diamonds, and then there's the blue bars, where they met, the growth targets were in grades three, four, five, six, and seven. Targets were almost hit, like really close, in grades two and nine. There were larger gaps in mathematics in grades one, eight, and 10. Once again, this is a large improvement over the previous year's scores, and we're looking at that trajectory continuing. But it certainly does indicate that there are gaps that we need to identify, and that's what we use this data for. We look at it, we identify those gaps, and we have teachers and others working to try to figure out how do we improve those scores as we go forward. So again, I'm just kind of sharing that overall information with folks as part of the State of Schools. If you want more, there's plenty more in the State of the Schools address. Please feel free to locate that on our website. For additional information, I just want to announce to folks that we have had a back and forth with SNAP. It was kind of timely that Raina had her presentation there. I think a lot of people are thinking about food, SNAP benefits, how do we help, those kinds of things. In the state of Maine, whether it sticks or not, the SNAP benefits from November did wind up going out. Whether they stay that way is another question mark because the Supreme Court did reverse that ruling that was earlier held. But what I can tell you is that from the school's perspective, we offer no cost, I have to use the right term, not free, no cost breakfast and lunch to all students. We also offer our school backpack program, which is very active across all five of our schools, to provide snacks and on the weekends, perhaps even a meal or two with the backpack program. We also have the benefit in Gorm of an incredibly supportive Gorm food pantry that is available. And then I did want to remind folks too that the community of Gorm as a whole, the municipality, town of Gorm, also offers food, sorry, general assistance, which can involve food as well. So those are all examples of things that can be done or resources that can be held here. Schools are helping with the community as a whole. And I also know that like there are food drives going on across, I think, every one of our schools. And I was in the middle school today, and I, I think parents were dropping off some items for the food drive. They were filling up the office. Like, the office was stacking them up pretty high. So I know that there's a lot of other volunteer efforts around the community to help individuals with food. So I would say if you're a family or a community member that is experiencing food insecurity, reach out to somebody. Either in schools, I can, if I can answer, I can, I know who to go to. Or you can reach out to anybody at the town level as well in the office here. So please do that because there's, I think there's ample community support out there for folks. The other thing, the only other thing, I'll stop after this one, is to just let folks know that we are going to have our dessert and discuss meeting tomorrow night. That meeting is going to start at 6 o'clock. I said seven, and then what? I gotta change that one. 6 o'clock at the high school library. That meeting is our annual kickoff meeting to the budget development process for FY '27. At this meeting, all members of the district leadership team will be presenting information to the school committee to provide basically the context and the backdrop for the budget conversations that will be taking place over the course of the next several months. So it's a very informative meeting. It will be recorded, and we'll put that up on the website as well. But if folks want to attend, they can, because also about halfway through that agenda, we get to enjoy some desserts showcased by our wonderful school nutrition folks. Although desserts and school nutrition, I don't know if that goes together, but they're wonderful cooks, so we'll give them that. That's right. There you go. So anyway, if folks want to come, you're more than welcome to. I think we probably have, we typically have ample enough desserts for a large crowd. So there we go. That's all I have for tonight. There's more in the writing there, but feel free to ask questions if you have them.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent Perry. Any questions from school committee members? All right, seeing none. Moving on to 3.4, school committee correspondence. Eric, do you want to get us started?
Sure. A few things I have this month, actually. So reminder that the Gorm Sure. A few things I have this month, actually. So, reminder that the Gorham rec basketball signups are almost ending soon. We have a terrific Gorham rec basketball program. Also, on December 3rd, a favorite of my family's, it's a Wednesday half-day at the schools, and the rec program is putting on the free skate at USM. So, that's always one to check out. The Gorham Arts Alliance is also putting on a performance of Annie Junior this weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. I will take this opportunity to reiterate the plug for the dessert and discuss tomorrow, which is, I describe as the painful, and it's really informative about what we need to address and how to prioritize it. But, most importantly, on October 22nd, we had a fantastic workshop meeting, which introduced the idea of the Transitions Program, which was really inspiring and encouraging, focusing on early intervention in our schools. I'm very pleased to see it on the agenda today. I am, of course, in support of it. I think it's going to be an awesome program. So, thank you to the principals of the elementary schools, and I am looking forward to seeing this in action.
Excellent. Thanks, Eric. I'm going to bounce around a little bit. Mia?
Okay. Well, I wish that Mitzi was still here, because what I wanted to speak to was transportation. A few weeks ago was Bus Safety Week, and I would just like to put a shout out to all of the transportation employees. They do an amazing job, and if you think about it, they are here the longest part of the day. I mean, they're up and probably on the road at 6:00 in the morning, starting their high school routes, and they're there until, you know, the driving, the athletes home from events. So, they deserve a big shout out to all of transportation.
Great. Thanks, Mia. Michelle?
Yeah, I just had a couple of things as well. So, I wanted to give a shout out to our boys cross-country team, who, they were the Class A South Runner-Up, so recognizing those athletes, as well as our Fall Cheer athletes, who are champions of game day, the game day cheer competition. So, I know we recognized our amazing volleyball athletes earlier, and I just want to recognize those two teams of athletes as well. And then, another little tidbit that I pulled from our administrative reports, I just wanted to welcome the 21 new subs. That looks like they went through the training. And I read that due to interest, that there's another session for that in January, so just a plug to anyone who is interested in subbing. That will be coming up. And then, just a shout out to all of our veterans, you know, for Veterans Day yesterday. Thank you for your service.
Great. Thanks, Michelle. Luansa, do you have anything you want to add?
Oh, you know, due to being so new here, I don't have anything to add at this particular moment.
Okay, great. Thanks. Polly?
Liked Luansa, the new kid, but I'm pleased to be here, and thank you for having me.
Great. Thanks, Polly. Jeff?
Yeah, I would like to echo Superintendent Perry's comments about the Gorham Backpack Program. It's one that I volunteer with by picking up food, so it's a really small contribution. But, just seeing how they were proactive, rather than waiting to be reactive with the uncertainty in the world, saw them being very proactive in planning of how they would react, you know, if the SNAP benefits didn't go out. So, that was great to see such support for our community, and, you know, the community in general coming together, and businesses organizing, you know, food drop-offs. It's been great to see the community rally around people who need the assistance. So, thank you.
Great. Thanks, Jeff.
Awesome. Sorry, one more. I would be remiss in my role as a lung cancer screening nurse. November is Lung Cancer Awareness Month, so if you have anyone in your family who would be at risk, please encourage them to be screened.
Okay, great. Thanks, Jeff. I'm going to take a moment to recognize Superintendent Perry, who, a few short weeks ago, was awarded the Maine's 2026 Superintendent of the Year by the Maine School Superintendents Association. Some of the things that were highlighted in her getting the award was being able to bring back our alternative education program to the high school, the numerous activities that we have with our CTE programs, our ASPIRE program, our pre-K program. We are truly lucky to have Superintendent Perry here in our district, and I think she has been not only a wonderful mentor to all of us here on the school committee, to members of our DLT, but also numerous folks in the community with the different relationships you have built with businesses, but also being able to work with other partners throughout the state. When we were able to go up and be in Augusta when the award was received, I had multiple people come up to me, did not know who I was, but just noticed on my name tag that I was from Gorham, and then had nothing but wonderful things to say about Superintendent Perry and what a great mentor she has been to those folks. So, not only other superintendents, but other assistant superintendents. So, I just want to say a very heartfelt congratulations. We're very proud of you, so thank you so much. And then, the other thing I wanted to highlight was, as an affected parent of the unexpected early dismissal that happened at Narragansett, I wanted to shout out to Mrs. Epler and team. This was, obviously, as I just mentioned, very unexpected, and as a mom who works from home and happened to have to be in Portland for a meeting at that very given time, as well as a significant other who was also in an office, not at home, we were informed with really excellent communication. I thought the whole process went smoothly, not only from the folks at the school themselves, but also, again, in wanting to recognize our bus drivers and transportation folks, who made sure that there were probably some kiddos who, again, were unexpectedly at home that day. They were given lots of care and made sure that they were, you know, safe getting home when they needed to, given the circumstances. So, I just wanted to shout out to everyone for that. So, thank you so much. Moving on to 4.0 School Committee Standing Committees and Special Committees. 4.1 Finance and Facilities. Michelle?
Yes. So, we held our last meeting on October 15th. We kicked off the meeting talking about a trending topic tonight, the impact of the government shutdown. So, again, still more of that wait and see was discussed, and so that's where we continue to be. But, I know that the Finance Committee will continue to kind of monitor that situation. We also had a review or discussion around free and reduced lunch count, so we all remember that that was a really important push to get that paperwork in, so that we could have those, that, you know, accurate percentage of the free and reduced lunch rates. We did have a little bit of a drop, but it's coming in at just over 19%, down from 21% last year, so we don't know exactly the impact of that, but the superintendent will keep us posted there as well. We also did a review of the bus lease and amortization schedule, which is quite interesting, if anyone's interested in that sort of thing, just how we rotate through, you know, the purchase of our, or the lease purchase of the buses and how that works. So, looks like there will be a request potentially coming forward for two additional buses, but more to come on that as things get finalized with our Transportation Director. And then, we did the traditional review of our monthly financial statements, the substitute report that we review, which is also a very interesting document, and then our warrants and overtime reports, and we also reviewed the credit card statements. So, our next meeting will be Tuesday, November 25th, with our new Finance Committee at 6:00 PM.
Any questions for Michelle? All right, seeing none. Thanks, Michelle. Moving on to 4.2 Policy. Mia?
Okay. Well, we have not met since our last meeting. We're not going to hold a meeting in November. We've started having meetings every other month, and we're making our meetings a little bit longer, so they will be an hour and a half. The next meeting will be December 10th at 5:30 in the superintendent's office.
Great. Thanks, Mia. Moving on to 4.3 Personnel. Michelle?
Personnel has not met since our previous meeting, and the next meeting will be determined soon.
Thank you. Moving on to 4. Vocational Education. Heather?
Yes, well, Jen was there, just so you know, but she's no longer on the school committee, so I'll fill her report for this time. This was the first actual meeting of both WRVC and PAS programs at the last month in October. They shared many of their membership or enrollment updates at that time. I want to proudly report that we have maximized every single seat that we have available to us at WRVC. We actually have 70 students attending WRVC. That's the highest ever. We actually are only second to Bonnie Eagle for the number of students that are sent. We even beat Westbrook when it's on their campus. So, that's really great news. We also had the PAS enrollment information that was shared with us. So, all told, combined between the two programs, we have about 135 students attending CTE programs in our, from our schools, from Gorham High School, which is, again, the most that we've had ever. So, I want to report that.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? All right. Moving on to 4.5 Ad-Hoc Committees Teaching and Learning. Eric?
The Teaching and Learning Committee last met on October 28th. We worked in individual groups and in a large group to review the draft Portrait of a Graduate, and each had opportunity to comment in the individual groups that were then brought to the larger group. We will continue to work on the Portrait of a Graduate and refine that. The next meeting is December 2nd at 3:30 by Zoom.
Great. Any questions for Eric? Seeing none. Thank you, Eric. Moving on to Anti-Racism and Equity Committee. So, we had our most recent meeting on October 30th? Yes, October 30th, at the high school library. This was the first time that we have met since the new school year, so a lot of what we did was getting to know you sort of thing. We do have some members that are previous members, and then some new members as well. We talked a little bit about the history of our group, why did the group form, what are some of the goals of the group. We shared some feedback from the school committee that was shared at a workshop meeting in September, and then kind of wanted to take a look at what next steps might look like. So, what does the committee, what are some areas that we want to focus on? What does that look like? What does a five-year picture look like as far as this committee and the work that it's doing? You know, how do we look at making our community more inclusive of folks? And then, what does that really tangibly look like? So, we were able to provide some feedback around that. What we're going to do in our next meeting is sort of take all of that feedback that was received by folks, and then really kind of start to map out that plan moving forward. Our next meeting is going to be November 20th at 5:30 in the high school library. Any questions? All right, seeing none. Moving on to Dropout Prevention Committee. Mia?
Yes, we met earlier today, and it's a committee that will have approximately three meetings throughout the year, stations for addressing the problems, and submit the findings to the school committee. We talked a lot. Each one of us sort of went through and talked about our successes and our challenges that we're finding throughout the year. One of the big things that we talked about, and it's really amazing to see, is all of the attention that's going in toward trying to manage attendance, and the importance of getting kids to school, and all of the different strategies that all the schools are using. Our next meeting has not been officially scheduled, but it will be probably around mid-February.
Great. Any questions for Mia? Seeing none. Thank you, Mia. Moving on to 5.0 Unfinished Business. 5.1 Consideration and Action on Second Reading of the Following Policies. Student Social Events, JJB. Student Fundraising Activities, JJE. Use of Physical Restraint and Seclusion, JKAA. Mia?
There you go. These are policies that were reviewed by both the Policy Committee and presented for first read in October. Neither Heather or myself have received any feedback, questions, or changes, so at this time, the Policy Committee recommends approval.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve of policies JJB, JJE, and JKAA for second and final reading as presented.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, second by Eric. Any questions or discussion? All right, seeing none. All of those in favor? That is 5-0. All those opposed? Those abstaining? Two. All right. Thank you, Mia.
Sure.
Moving on to 6.0 New Business. 6.1 Action as Needed on Communications and Reports. None. 6.2 Action to Approve Transition Program Pilot for Winter/Spring of 2025/2026 at Village Elementary Schools. Superintendent Perry?
Absolutely. So, I'm going to provide just a little bit of an overview. We did discuss at length, and the K-5 principals presented a very thorough proposal to the school committee at our last workshop meeting in October. The purpose of this program, which is, we're going to be entitling the Transitions Program, is to actually expand and strengthen our current alt-ed programming that is occurring at our K-5 schools. We currently have a ed-tech that is staffing an alternative education programming at each of the three schools. What this transition program would do, it would increase the staffing. We would start with a pilot at Village Elementary School this spring, so for the second half of the school year, we would start with a pilot, collect data, and hope, and see its impacts. And then, the proposal would be to include the other two schools in the expansion of this program for the FY '27 budget proposal. A lot of data was presented at the last workshop around the need for this particular program. Much of it has to do with the fact that we are seeing an increase in students coming to our schools that don't have much historical information. They do not have special education programming, and we don't necessarily know what they are eligible for programming, but in the meantime, they're experiencing distress in our schools, whether that be through behavior or discipline, but it also could be in many other forms as well, with anxiety and those kinds of things occurring as well. And because they're not in special education, it's very difficult for us to provide the programming that they need in regular education to be successful. This Transitions Program is aimed at providing those supports and resources for those students as they transition from wherever they were to our schools, and then perhaps maybe they'll transition further into, excuse me, into special education programs. Perhaps they'll transition right back into their regular ed classrooms with the additional support that's provided. But, the purpose of this is to provide that extra support, because we are seeing students consistently across the past few years that require this support, and we're not able to program for them. So, that's what this is all about. I certainly would refer you back to the materials that are, that were presented at the workshop. They're also linked into your agenda notes. There was a slide presentation. There's a program overview. There was a question and answer document that you all asked, which is also linked into your agenda notes and is part of the information that the public can view. There were a total of, I think, eight questions, eight questions that were asked and answered, so hopefully you've had a chance to review that as well to help inform your decision tonight. Also, there was a request for specific data that would be collected during the pilot program at Village that would help us to determine success of the program, and whether or not it will reganset in Great Falls for the coming year. And there is a list that is provided for you in your agenda notes for that data that would be collected to help inform that decision. So, hopefully, that is all the information you asked for, for additional information to help make decision. And I certainly open it up for a motion and then some further discussion.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the creation of a Transitions Program pilot at Village Elementary School for the winter-spring of the 2025/2026 school year.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, second by Eric. Discussion. Yeah, go ahead, Michelle.
I just was going to start, I think, with just giving some comments, so less questions, but more comments from me. So, I think one of the big concerns with something like this coming forward outside of the budget cycle is the question, kind of, why is this happening outside of the normal budget cycle? I think through the document, but also the great presentation we had in our last workshop, I think it was clear to me why it's coming outside of the budget cycle. So, to me, in my, you know, former professional life, when we had an issue or something we were trying to address, or an idea, that's a positive one even, oftentimes, the best path is to pilot something before you actually implement a significant change, so that you can take the data that you get and make the right changes at scale. So, I really appreciate that that's the approach that we're taking here. I think, for me, it's really important to just highlight that approval of this now isn't, as to my understanding, this would be the confirmation question, is not inherently approval at scale that this is going to 100% make it into the budget for next year. that this is going to 100% make it into the budget for next year. So, I'm kind of basing my thoughts on those points.
That is correct. Just to be clear, the motion on the floor tonight is just for the pilot program at Village Elementary School for the second half of the school year. And then decisions would need to be made as part of the FY27 budget development process as to whether or not we would continue to expand.
Any other questions?
I will say as well, again, not to sound like a broken record, but for folks to go back and to listen to the presentation that we got from Mrs. Epler, Mrs. Fodder, and Mrs. Fortier, one of the things that stood out to me during the presentation is that you can really sense from all three of these principals, the desperate and dire need to help these children who are struggling, and to really kind of think about it in several different ways. Not only is it affecting the child, it's affecting the teachers and the staff and the other students in the classroom. I speak to this as a mom of children in our schools. I also speak to it as a social worker. I was a previous psychiatric clinician who worked with children, and it's just really important and something that I will be voting in favor of. All right, so... Yes. Oh, sorry, Mia, go ahead.
So, this was a really, really difficult one for me, and where I struggled was I needed to understand. And that's when I got stuck, and that's why I asked so many questions. And anybody that knows me knows that I will overthink things to, yeah, Cheryl's nodding, overthink things to death. I read the overviews. I watched the slides again. I read the materials that Mrs. Fortier gave. I had an incredibly difficult time figuring out how somebody could have such an extreme behavior and not qualify for specialty, not have something behind it. And I did a lot of research, and there is a very fine line between a maladjusted student and an ED, an emotional disability. And so, once I sort of grasped that and had a little pep talk with myself, and I said, Mia, you don't need to understand. You just need to trust. And I do. And I trust the people that would be running the program. One thing that stood out, and none of you can see it, but I've got a big number 15 here. Can anybody guess what 15? It was the number of times that safety was mentioned in the presentations. And so, that was really the clincher for me, is that it's for safety for the staff, for the students, and you have my absolute full support.
Thanks, Mia. Anyone else? Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
One thing that, when I looked at this program, it's not an insignificant amount of money to staff, and the students that are affected, directly affected, seems relatively small in relation to how much will be spent on the program. So, I encourage people that have those concerns to look at the indirect effects. One of the things in the presentation was how long each of these outbursts takes away from the classroom time. You know, there were some that were, you know, quoted almost up to an hour, I think it was, that one, that one outburst can take away from the teacher being able to teach the class. So, really, all of the students in that classroom are being affected by those outbreaks, outbursts. And then also, just from the, you know, principals and the vice principals having to then take their time out of their day to address these issues is really kind of taking away from the role that we've hired them, that we want them to be filling of taking care of the administrative, providing the administrative support to the staff. So, I would encourage anyone that thinks this is a lot of money for a small program to kind of keep in mind all of the effects. And then there's, you know, carry-on effects of early intervention while they're still children, and being able to make these interventions that, who knows what it prevents from happening down the road, whether these would grow up to enter the criminal justice system, which would cost a lot more money, alternative education, having to be sent outside the district. So, by making these early interventions, I'm very excited to see what can happen for these students.
Thanks, Jeff. All right. All those in favor? All right, 7-0. Moving on to 6.3, action to approve the creation of a one-year Transitions Teacher Position for Village Elementary School. Superintendent Perry?
Yeah, so, I mean, you approved the program in the previous motion, but I do need a separate motion to approve allowing the creation of the position, the teaching position, that would need to be hired to staff this pilot program at Village Elementary School. So, in essence, what you would be doing here is approving of a one-year position, which I say one year, it's not even a full year. It would be the second half of this school year position that we would post for and seek to hire, and that's what this motion would do.
Great. Thank you. Who would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve of the addition of a one-year teaching position for the remainder of the 2025-2026 school year for the new Transitions Program pilot at Village Elementary School.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, second by Eric. Questions or comments? Yeah?
Just for the public more so, can you talk about how the funding would be covering this new position, essentially? Where that's coming from?
Yeah, certainly. So, funding for this position is going to come from within the current FY26 budget. We've identified some cost savings that have, that have occurred over the course so far this year and that we anticipate for the remainder of this year. So, I feel very comfortable that this one, this is a one position. It's not even a full year. So, it's going to be somewhere around $50,000 total maximum impact in this fiscal year, and I feel very confident that we can cover that within the current budget.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I have a question for Superintendent Perry. How confident are you that you will be able to fill this position for the second half of this school year, given the challenges of this role and also the limited timeframe?
It certainly is a challenge. I'm not going to dismiss that, Eric. It is a challenge to find an individual with the skill set that we're looking for for this particular program in the middle of the year. However, I do believe strongly that we are able to draw nicely from other school systems and/or other private service providers in the area, whose staff members probably will find this to be a very intriguing position because it's not special education. It doesn't have the paperwork requirements associated with it. However, you're still going to be able to directly serve the students that are in the highest need, and so that speaks to a lot of people. So, I feel pretty good. I'm not going to give you the 100% thing because I can't make those promises, but I feel pretty good that we're going to be able to fill the position.
Thank you. Good question. All right. All those in favor? 7-0. Moving on to 6.4, first reading of the following policies. Corporal Punishment, JKA. Student Activity Funds Management, JJE. Removal of Students with Disabilities, JK... Sorry, did I say JJE and then JKF? Integration of Students from the Juvenile Correctional Facilities, JLDBJ. Public Participation at School Committee Meetings, BEDH. Mia?
Okay, I'm on. So, for first read, for the corporal punishment and use of force, there are no suggested changes. It's very direct. For Student Activities and Fund Management, again, no suggested changes. I do believe that, did Hollis take a peek? Was that what Hollis took a peek at? Yes. Yep, so our business director. Removal of Students with Disabilities, there is no suggested changes. There is an added reference to procedures. So, procedures were added to that, and on the policy itself, there is just a reference to how to get to those. For the reintegration of students from juvenile correctional facilities, just a little bit of minor wordsmithing. One thing was added that if the student does have an IEP, that in their reintegration plan, the case manager, the IEP case manager should be included as part of that team. So, that was really the only add to that policy. Public Participation at School Committee Meetings, we removed some limitations to only be able to comment on items on the agenda, so now that is open to other items. We added a reference to resident, parent, guardian, students, and employees will be first if there is time after those people have been able to make their comments. The chair will make the decision whether or not we have time for other comments. The chair can determine the total time for public comment. It is not an appropriate forum for complaints against students or staff. There are alternate channels for that, and we sort of clarified some of the etiquette and decorum expectations.
Any questions for Mia right now? All right, seeing none. Moving on to 7.0, adjournment. Thanks, everyone.